...for tonight.
It's not the first time that he threatened me to sue me.
Table the motion.
You better table it. You've got a whole lot of witnesses.
Hello, hello? Yeah, okay. I'm gonna propose an alternative motion. The motion I'm gonna propose, I'm going to take the learned advice of, of Dr. Richmond. I think he made a sensible suggestion that the two parties should get together and try to sort the issue out. And I'm gonna try to convince the board as a whole that that is a prudent approach to the matter. So pass the motion before the board at the moment, that we take steps to have to reconcile the... Okay, the president does advise me it doesn't require a formal motion. But we're gonna make sure that we take those steps. And thank you, Dr. Richmond, is it?
Yes.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Given those comments, I'm going to withdraw the motion at this time. And proceed with the next item.
When you quote while you're ahead, okay?
Really?
Really?
I'm going to proceed to the next motion on the agenda, which is the sales lease report.
I'm gonna get the sales lease report tonight. Social went home very early, so... All right. Leases. B1V, two-bedroom, thirteen hundred and seventy-five dollars. Approved. B2T, two-bedroom, thirteen hundred dollars was canceled. B3U, one-bedroom, eight hundred and fifty dollars, approved. G1K, one-bedroom, eight hundred dollars, approved. G1V, two-bedroom, eleven hundred and fifty dollars, approved. G2Y, one-bedroom, nine hundred dollars, approved. H1V, two-bedroom, eleven hundred dollars, approved. H2V, two-bedroom, twelve hundred and fifty dollars, approved. I2S, one-bedroom, a thousand dollars, approved. I3U, one-bedroom, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, approved. M3A, one-bedroom, fifteen hundred dollars, approved. M3J, two-bedroom, a thousand dollars, declined. M3V, two-bedroom, twelve hundred dollars, approved. S3F, one-bedroom, nine hundred dollars, approved. Y1K, one-bedroom, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, approved. Y2G, one-bedroom, nine hundred dollars, approved. Y2Q, one-bedroom, eight hundred and fifty dollars, approved. Y3H, two-bedroom, eleven hundred dollars, approved. Z3O, one-bedroom, nine hundred dollars, approved. And last, Z3Q, one-bedroom, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, approved. There were twenty leases submitted from March sixteenth to April seventeenth. Okay, rollovers. B1A, one-bedroom, seven-eight, approved. B3M, it's an efficiency, five-seventy-five, approved. E2F, one-bedroom, seven-fifty, declined. G1W, two-bedroom, eleven hundred, approved. H3Y, one-bedroom, eight-fifty, approved. I1P, three-bedroom, fourteen-fifty, approved. M1N, one-bedroom, eight hundred and twenty-five, approved. M2R, studio, a thousand dollars, approved. M3F, one-bedroom, eight-fifty, approved. N3V, two-bedroom, eleven-twenty-five, approved. O1M, it's an efficiency, five-hundred-and-fifty, approved. O1Q, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five, it's a one-bedroom, approved. And last, S1Z, it's a two-bedroom, fourteen hundred dollars, approved. There were thirteen rollovers from March sixteenth to April seventeenth. Purchase. There were four purchases submitted and processed from March sixteenth to April seventeenth. They are: B3J, two-bedroom, eighty thousand, approved. H1E, two-bedroom, seventy-two thousand, approved. H2X, two-bedroom, seventy-five thousand, approved. And Z2R, it's a studio for twenty-nine thousand, approved. There were four applications submitted and processed from March sixteenth to April seventeenth for occupants. B3J, approved. G2G, approved. N1K, approved. And S2V was declined. And the rent roll. H2T, twelve hundred and seventy-five dollars. I1I, eight hundred dollars. O1H, a thousand dollars. Z3B, nine hundred dollars. Z3R is vacant. The T shop is three-twenty-two-fifty. And a beauty salon is three hundred. Total rent collected was four thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Are we in the rental community now with all these rentals? You're only supposed to have like twenty percent?
Not anymore.
No, I'm done.
There is no gap anymore. The gap was removed.
So how many, you can have as much rentals as you can?
That's right.
How much percentage of rentals do we have legal notice?
Really, I'm being honest.
John, out of all that, John, out of all the rentals that you're saying, how much is the village have involved in those rentals?
You mean how many we are renting? I think it's like, was it five or eight, David? Five to eight, something like that?
There are four units being rented.
Four?
Yeah, the association owns seven.
What about the other three?
Uh, Z3Es, Z3R is vacant. G...
Well, it doesn't matter, it's basically like five, correct? Five.
David? The rent rolls are the units that are taken over by the association, the last part. Rent roll?
Yes.
What is the case with Suric 1W?
Excuse me?
Suric 1W, is it empty?
The association doesn't know.
No.
Association doesn't own that unit. C1D?
Yeah.
David, when you say owned, do you mean owned or have title to it?
The association foreclosed at some point in time, took title to the unit.
The association owns it outright, there's no bank?
No, I'm sure there's a warrant on it.
And we don't own some bank owns it, but we have title to it.
That's what I said, I said the association has title to it.
As opposed to owned it?
The association has title to it. Thank you, you're welcome.
David, can I ask you a question? If it's a foreclosure and the condo owns it, owns it, when the bank takes over and they say, "It's clear now", what happens then?
If there is a mortgage on the unit, the association forecloses, the association takes title.
Right.
All right, which allows the association either A, to sell it, or B, to lease it. Okay? Now, if there's still, I say if there is still a mortgage, all right, the first mortgagier, which is the bank, all right, we have to wait for them now to foreclose on the unit. All right, but in the meantime, we're gonna try and make as much money as possible on that unit, by renting it. Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
What happens in the instance of a person who had a reverse mortgage and they passed away? What happens to that apartment as far as the villagers?
Okay, two things. Number one, I'm not an attorney, so I can't give you legal advice. Number two, I'm not a real estate agent or anything, and I don't know that much about reverse mortgages. I can tell you that you can't get a reverse mortgage until you're sixty-two.
Right.
Okay. Honestly, I don't know, I can't answer, I'm sorry.
David? Why those is showing the public records that we own eight units? Or that we have taken over eight units?
Because one was just sold.
What, what?
One was just sold and it probably hasn't hit Broward County yet.
There are five in this report and there are eight in there.
Yeah, because there's only five that are rented.
And what happened to the other two?
I was explaining.
Sorry.
One is so demolished, we still have to rebuild it. Okay? There's another one that's in the process of being built. Offhand, I don't know. Unfortunately, Social isn't here, she would have that info. The one that's in the process of being rebuilt. Maybe it's, I don't know, offhand, I can't tell you, Wendy, I'm sorry, I don't have that info.
We through the sales lease?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is, eleven is, B2S unauthorized sale. David, can you explain this item?
Actually, Hayden, you're having a thought. We have a situation where a unit was offered to be sold at a cost of forty thousand dollars. The paperwork that was submitted to the association says forty thousand dollars. And when I went on to the Broward County website to download, which I do for all the files, either myself or Social, we noticed that on the property appraisers, the unit sold for thirty-two thousand. It was approved for forty. So unfortunately, because the unit sold for a price different than what was approved by the board, okay, the association, excuse me, the association was never really given the right of first refusal on the new contract price. We were never notified of a new contract price. So, the association checked with their attorney. And Hayden, do you wanna take over?
Yes, the matter is brought up with the attorney. And the board has decided to pass the matter on to the attorney for the appropriate action. That is about it.
In other words, more legal fees.
No, 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 no. The motion before the board is that the matter be formally passed to the attorney to take the appropriate action.
Who's gonna pay the attorney then?
What's your name, ma'am?
My name is Marcia.
Marcia, the last time we took over a unit, we paid forty thousand for it, and we sold it for fifty-five.
Excuse me, was the unit empty?
Excuse me?
Was the unit empty?
Yeah.
Okay, well, this unit was full. And so forty thousand dollars was paid for the unit.
Did you hear?
I understand what was recorded, but there was stuff in the units which sold for eight thousand dollars, which is not recorded into the blow-in records.
The contract said that the unit was to be sold for forty thousand dollars.
There's no contract?
There was no contract.
No contract? Can you show us a contract?
The matter is going to be passed.
You're just wasting time and money.
Who's the attorney then?
Who is the attorney?
Yeah, I wanna know who they're doing.
Who is the attorney?
Isn't it odd that this is Harriet Hamler, my wife, which you all are attacking? Isn't this odd? Miriam Gordon, Jeff Edwards, and Harriet Hamler. That's who you all are after. And Elon White, let's not forget him.
Mr. Edwards? I did not know that you were Mr. Edwards, to be honest with you.
Well, now you know.
Right, so I couldn't have had anything against you.
I introduced myself to you last meeting, sir. I also am willing to ask you, if alliance is not settled, when exactly are we going to have audited financial results?
Mr. Edwards?
Yes, sir.
You keep hitting me with these questions.
Well, they're easy questions.
Just not just, they're not the topic of discussion. But let me answer you just this once. When an auditor doesn't audit, and the auditor is not comfortable with a particular balance, he can make mention of that concern or that feeling in his audit report. So you can have an audit report except for this balance or except for this situation. So you can get the audit down.
Great, because we're looking forward to that auditing financials.
Hey, I got a question.
Yes, Dr. Richmond?
How does the right of first refusal come up between contractual agreement between two parties?
Really?
That are, that are, it seems to me that the only time that the association has right of first refusal is when you're dealing with a bankrupt apartment. Isn't that correct?
No, that's not correct.
You can intervene in a contractual agreement between two separate parties?
Yes, sir.
You sure of that?
Positive, sir.
Okay.
I believe you're so wrong, whoever the attorney wants, you need to look at the attorney.
Who is the attorney?
I don't believe what you said.
No, I just said Marcia has spoken.
Oh, you're wrong. This is the way the board gets together.
Excuse me, who is the attorney that you are turning this over to, please? The name of that attorney? I believe I have a right to know who that might be. Thank you.
Transparency. Would that attorney be Elaine Cottis? Would that attorney's name be Elaine Cottis? Simple question.
We're not allowed to know?
She is one of our attorneys.
Is that the one that's going to handle this?
Well, we can choose from either Elaine or there's another attorney who's our attorney.
We look forward to the legal paperwork.
Okay.
Wait a minute, David, because you said that you spoke to the attorney.
He spoke to the attorney.
Which one did you talk to?
You get a legal opinion from an attorney.
From which one? Because this is to be, that there was no attorney, either we wasted money talking to an attorney about this matter that is not really important, or he made that up, that he spoke to an attorney and asked for advice, and this is only a addictive action against him.
Wendy, are you calling me a liar?
I'm calling John LaBriola a liar. If you support him, I'm sorry, by addition.
Wendy, Wendy, are you calling me a liar?
Did you talk to a lawyer?
I said we got an opinion. I would hardly go to a bar for a legal opinion.
Is yours who? Nobody gives an opinion for free.
How tough is this? The name of the attorney.
And stop playing John LaBriola's games, please.
Mr. Edwards, whatever attorney is chosen, will get in touch with you.
I am on an agenda for a board meeting over the sale of a unit between two individual partners, of property owners, who were friends. And the unit was purchased for thirty-two thousand dollars, plus eight thousand dollars for the furnishes, which is forty thousand dollars. What don't you understand about that? Why, do you think there's some nefarious crap?
Why was it brought upon?
And why is it on the agenda?
And that contacted me.
Is this Social or John, who put it on the agenda? Who's responsible for the agenda, sir?
I don't know.
Who is responsible for the agenda?
John.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes, who is responsible?
John.
Mr. Edwards, I don't shout at you.
And I'm not trying to say...
I have the greatest respect. But you're asking...
I don't have a mic.
Okay, hold on. You're asking, which question are you asking?
Who put it on the agenda?
Who put it on the agenda?
The president.
No, the agenda is...
For what? What's the answer?
The secretary, the manager.
That is a lie!
Anyone can put an issue on the agenda.
And who put this on the agenda?
Hang on, hang on. So if a matter comes up, any member of the board can put it on the agenda?
Who put it on the agenda?
I do not know.
You don't know?
No.
Mr. Simmons, did you put it on the agenda?
But Mr. Edwards, Mr. Edwards, Mr. Edwards, why do we address the matter hand?
That's what I'm addressing.
Okay, right. Now, remember, if you have a question that you're not happy with when I talk, you can meet me and I will discuss.
I appreciate that.
Right.
And that's very nice, but we would like to know who put this on the agenda? We have the board here, it's a simple question. Who put it on the agenda?
It was already brought out in front of everybody, so let's say the right.
Who put it on the agenda? Stand up, John.
I'm, I'm, Mr. Edwards.
You can't stand up, John, and say you were the one?
He's a coward, he won.
The motion before the board is that we pass the matter on to the attorney for appropriate action.
I'll say it.
That's so good. You people vote for this, you have something really wrong with you.
I know that lawsuit, I know.
Wait a minute. Do you know how many apartments have been sold?
Is there any discussion on the board? We haven't had a board discussion about this. We can open it to the board. So, board, any discussion on the board about this?
I wanna divorce it. Not to be offensive or anything, but I think we have better use for our time, our attorney time, and our money, than dealing with this situation. When I saw this on the agenda, I honestly thought, okay, this was an illegal suit, or it was a quit-deed under the table. But now listening to what the reason is to bring this up, it is ridiculous. And I'm not defending Mr. Edwards at all, make it that clear. I pointed out that it's a waste of our legal fees once again. Now that we are gonna encourage another lawsuit, we have to go through this because of bad decisions or decisions made out of emotions like I said, common situation with Mr. LaBriola. That's what I have to say.
What exactly is the problem? What exactly is the problem that Harriet Hamler...
Nothing, that he doesn't like it.
What is the problem, sir?
If he wants somebody else, then we no problem, it's because it's him.
As soon as she's finished talking, I'll answer.
Okay, Wendy, please.
Yes.
What is the problem that the board is getting involved in this purchase?
The board has a policy of keeping the prices of its properties up. So whenever there is a low price on any property...
That's not your business.
It's not your business.
It is. Because if we allow, if we allow... Right, if we allow, let's suppose we allow properties, say, what do you have, a two-bedroom?
Well, the question is, on 2R, Z2R just went for twenty-nine thousand dollars. Are you getting involved in that? You just announced Z2R went for twenty-nine thousand dollars. Is that gonna be on the agenda next month? John? That's a large issue, sir.
This is basically how it works, I just wanna answer...
This is basically what?
How it works.
I just wanna answer Marcia's question. You had said, what was your question again? What is this about? This is how it works, if somebody wants to buy, if somebody buys a unit, and I'm just speaking generically right now, not picking on anyone or naming any one unit, but this is how it works. If there's a unit, let's say for twenty thousand dollars that you wanna buy, let's say a one-bedroom for twenty thousand dollars. Now, obviously, that's going to bring the comps down. You have a right to purchase that unit, but we also have the legal right to, for the right of first refusal, to actually purchase that unit, that twenty thousand dollar unit, if we desire, so to not bring the comps down. That's... Wait, wait, I'm just, I'm just, Jeffrey, I'm just answering your question. Sorry?
That's the craziest crap I've ever heard, do you believe that?
That's what the lawyer had told us before this even came out. I'm sorry, wait, hold on, hold on. Wait, please.
What attorney told you that?
Please, David, could you address that, please?
This'll be good.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, in your documents, all right, there is a section that deals with the purchase and/or sale and/or conveyance of a unit. In there, it gives the association the right of first refusal on all sales. You come and bring an application to either, to sell or purchase a unit. The association has the right of first refusal to purchase that at the selling price.
Has the association ever done that?
Yes, actually. Twice already, as a matter of fact. Two units that they just bought.
Within what period of time? In other words, within the past year?
And actually, Jeffrey, we did it multiple times when Scott Samuels was on the board as well.
So you're saying...
When Scott Samuels was on, your dad purchased an apartment.
No, no, no. You're mixing up two different things.
No, 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 I was here when your dad purchased that apartment. Okay? From the chef's.
This has nothing to do with right of first refusal, what are you talking about?
Excuse me, but the board does not get involved in that?
What does that have to do with the team, China?
The right of first refusal is when somebody is selling their unit, the association has the right to purchase the unit at the selling price.
So that means that if I want to sell my apartment to Jeffrey for ten thousand dollars, you can come in there and tell me...
That is correct. When you submit your paperwork, the application to sell your unit, or he comes in to buy the unit, the association has the right to act, the right of first refusal and purchase that unit at your selling price, yes.
Let me ask you a question.
And we are all subject to that, it's not just Jeffrey, it's not just me.
When Man CoCo sold his unit to Doug for ten dollars, did the association come in?
I don't know, I wasn't here. I'm sorry, I can't answer something like that.
I mean, really? Is this the height of hypocrisy here?
So that's how, Marcia?
Pretty good, aren't they, Doug?
All right, there's a motion on the second floor. Is there any objection to this motion? You go ahead. So, just to further, just to further explain, that twenty, that hypothetical... That hypothetical twenty thousand dollar unit, that one-bedroom unit, if, obviously, that would be potentially subject to right of first refusal on part of the association. Now, one could simply present to the association a unit that's, that twenty thousand dollars instead for thirty or forty or fifty to ensure that we can't exercise a right to first refusal because we wouldn't buy above or even at market value. We're going to buy significantly under. So that's where problems could potentially lie. That's at the crux of all of this.
But what if it's a family?
No, that's not, that's not what's...
Jeffrey, what if it's a family?
I'm not being partial, I'm just explaining to her the facts, that's all. I'm not being partial, I'm just explaining to her the facts, that's all.
What if it's my family that I'm selling the apartment to for ten thousand dollars? It's, you know, my carrier.